And from the Blacksburg New School, committed to providing progressive and engaging education since 1971. Now enrolling elementary and middle school students. BlacksburgNewSchool.org.
Showers and storms developing later today, primarily in areas east, particularly the I-95 quarter. The best chance, high temperatures in the mid eighties in the southwest, around 90 for the quarter, 95 for Roanoke, 95 around Danville. Evening showers and storms possible, lows in the mid sixties to mid seventies. Roanoke has 74 degrees, Danville 74, Fredericksburg 76, Charlottesville and Richmond 75.
T minus two days until we get trade deals, higher tariffs, or both, or neither.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Bitwarden Password Manager. With crowds gathering for summer festivals and sporting events, Bitwarden is designed to support secure access to accounts across devices anywhere from grandstands to general admission. Bitwarden.com.
From Marketplace, I'm Sabri Ben Ashor in for David Brancaccio. The deadline for countries the world over to agree to trade deals with the U.S. is Wednesday, or maybe not. Sky-high tariffs announced and delayed in April could come roaring back on Wednesday, or maybe not. President Trump and his advisors are issuing mixed messages. Marketplace's Nova Saffo sorts it out for us.
90 deals in 90 days was the promise almost 90 days ago when President Trump paused so-called reciprocal tariffs, the initial imposition of which sent stock and bond markets plummeting. Well, the 90 days are up this Wednesday, and the administration has announced two limited deals, one with the UK, the other with Vietnam. So now, as that deadline approaches, there are a number of new developments. For one, officials say more deals could come within days. In the meantime, they appear to be buying themselves more time, delaying the imposition of higher tariffs until August 1st. The president said his administration will send out letters to an unspecified number of countries as soon as noon Eastern today, apparently regarding either new tariff rates or new deals. The president also threatened new 10% tariffs on nations aligned with the BRICS group of developing countries, which includes Brazil, Russia, and China. That group over the weekend issued a statement criticizing tariffs without specifically naming the U.S. I'm Nova Saffo for Marketplace.
Tomorrow, the Federal Reserve Bank of New York is going to give us an update on how we consumers feel about inflation, specifically what we think is going to happen to prices in the future. Inflation expectations have been rising over the past six months. A survey in June from the University of Michigan found that even though actual inflation right now is about 2.4%, consumers think it'll get up to 5% a year from now. This is something economists track because the thing about inflation is that it can be as much about psychology as it is about prices. What we think inflation is going to do can affect what inflation actually ends up doing. Marketplace's Matt Levin has that.
So if you think the price of a car or washing machine is going to be a lot higher a year from now, the economically rational thing to do would be to buy said car or washing machine right now. And while you're at it, maybe think about asking for a raise. Brian Colton is an economist with Fitch Ratings.
Inflation expectations matter because they affect people's behavior. So they will affect the willingness of workers to carry on working with a given level of wages.
Higher consumer demand plus higher wages could lead businesses to charge higher prices. A self-fulfilling inflationary nightmare for the Fed. Oddly, this year, inflation expectations have been rising while actual inflation readings have been pretty stable. Economist Yuri Gorodnichenko at UC Berkeley says tariffs and even short-lived jumps in oil prices are triggering post-COVID inflation memories.
Everybody was scarred by, you know, recent inflation surge. They think, you know, high inflation can happen. It's a realistic scenario.
Even if we haven't seen tariffs really impact prices all that much, at least not yet, I'm Matt Levin for Marketplace.
All right, let's do the numbers. Dow, S&amp;P, and Nasdaq futures are all down from between less than a tenth of a percent up to four tenths of a percent. The Dow futures down just 15 points. The yield on the 10-year Treasury is 4.36%.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Schwab. Schwab offers investors choices like full-service wealth management, self-directed investing options, and trading on Thinkorswim. More at schwab.com. And by Viking, exploring the world in comfort with a fleet of small ships Viking offers travel experiences for the thinking person. Discover more at viking.com.
What is the line between a brand following a trend and outright copying a design? That is the question behind a Lululemon lawsuit against Costco. The athleisure brand says the discount warehouse ripped off designs of its popular sweatshirts and pants. Marketplace's Kristen Schwab looks at how successful these kinds of design lawsuits generally are.
Dupes culture has taken over social media.
Dupes fragrances that you can wear every day.
This tank is a skimstup, but better.
This is your sign to save yourself some money and get some dupes.
Call it a dupe, a copycat, or a knockoff. Though the trending term has changed over the years, the idea has been around for a long time, as long as people have been making stuff. Sarah Fackrell is a law professor at Illinois Tech.
This is nothing new. This is one reason why we even have design patents in the first place.
Design patents protect, well, the design of a product, its shape, pattern, and overall appearance. But getting a court to side with a patented owner to say, yes, Lululemon, Costco has copied your design? That is a difficult bar to pass.
So you've got to prove that someone's going to look at that jacket and think that it was made or sponsored or approved by Lululemon, just on how it looks.
That's pretty subjective. Plus, once you open this can of worms, the lawsuit possibilities become endless. Is the Ford Bronco a dupe for a Jeep? Is Pepsi a dupe for Coke? What is the difference between inspiration and outright copying? Christopher Durham is president of the Velocity Institute, which does private label consulting.
If you look across all of retail, 95% of all things are duplicates. 5% are innovation.
Durham says this is how trends work, and that competition is good for consumers because it means more selection and lower prices. Private labels have become so popular.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our city council session and our joint meeting with the Board of Zoning Appeals for July 7th. City council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. I'll invite our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the role for council, and then I'll ask the board secretary to call the role for the BZA.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mayor Cobb?
Here, and a quorum is present.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be here and a part of this meeting this morning. I would like to ask the secretary to the Board of Zoning Appeals to please go ahead and take the role for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Garner?
Here.
Mr. Hamler?
Here.
Mr. Logan?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Not seeing Mr. Miller. Ms. Smith?
Here.
And Mr. Varney?
Here, thank you. Okay, Mr. Moore, could you go ahead and please begin your presentation this morning for the joint session, please?
While they're coming up, I want to take a moment to say how important it is that we have these joint meetings with our boards and commissions. I don't believe we've met jointly for some time with the Board of Zoning Appeals. So today is an opportunity for us to learn more about what the Board of Zoning Appeals does, how they intersect with the work of council and the work of the city and the planning department. And as we go through the presentation, we'll have plenty of opportunity for questions, for clarity, for conversation. So Ms. Papa, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of city council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Gillian Papa. I'm the Director of Planning, Building, and Development, and just wanted to introduce staff and welcome you today and let you know a little bit about how capable the staff is, that staff the Board of Zoning Appeals. This particular board is one that's near and dear to my heart as a former zoning administrator, so very familiar with this important work. Today, you'll have, you'll be hearing from Philip Moore, our zoning administrator. He's a certified planner, as well as a certified zoning administrator. He's been with the city since 2015 and zoning administrator since 2021. Prior to that, he was with Hill Studio as a planner in the private sector. And then we also have Brittany Gardner, our deputy zoning administrator. She primarily staffs the Board of Zoning Appeals, also a certified planner, also a certified zoning administrator. Recently obtained her project management certificate, as well as, she's also a certified floodplain manager, which is part of the duties of administering the zoning ordinance. So I will turn it over to our very capable staff. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the honor of being here with you all today. I appreciate the time. What I want to do right out of the gate is just sort of introduce some of our newer members of city council to the work that the Board of Zoning Appeals does. It's really important work, I think, for the city of Roanoke, and just want to introduce you to that work. We're going to talk about the basis of BZA recommendations from staff to the board. We're going to talk about the quasi-judicial role of the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is different than some of our other boards and commissions sort of operate. Then we're going to talk about home stays and short-term rentals. I know that that's been getting a lot of sort of public scrutiny and interest lately. So I want to talk about that. That's one of the things that our board sees a lot of special exception requests for. And so I think it's important to have that conversation. And then we're going to talk at the end a little bit about board management and just the importance of, you know, keeping a fully staffed board and that sort of thing. So to start off, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a really important board for the city of Roanoke. The three main items that they review and decide are special exceptions, variances, and appeals of zoning administrator determinations. Special exceptions probably make up 95 at least percent of what this board actually sees on a monthly basis. And so I want to spend the most time probably talking about the special exceptions because that is sort of the volume that they see. Special exceptions authorize a use that would not otherwise be permitted in a zoning district unless it goes through the Board of Zoning Appeals process. If you look at the use table for our zoning districts, when you see a P in the box affiliated with the zoning district and the use, then that means the use is permitted by right, meaning it doesn't have to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals. If you see an S in that box, it means it requires a special exception. It needs to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals to be determined whether it's appropriate or not in that zoning district. And the Board of Zoning Appeals is the body that makes that decision. The granted special exception runs with the property, so it's not tied to the specific applicant. You know, once a special exception has been approved, that use forever is permitted on that piece of property, unless it's revoked for some reason. Variances are different. So special exceptions, they look at the use. Variances are different. Variances give deviations from the zoning ordinance for dimensional requirements and other sort of characteristics of use. And so, you know, a lot of what this board might see from a variant standpoint, a lot of times it has to do with setback requirements. So we require a certain amount of area in front of a building, or, you know, we pull the, want to see the building pulled up to the street in order to create the sort of street character that defines, you know, a urban environment versus a more suburban feel. So variances would allow deviations from those setback requirements, for instances, or, you know, height restrictions, things like that. So special exceptions, use-related, variances, dimensional requirement, deviations, or deviation, sorry. Appeals of zoning administrator determinations. This is another, this is the third sort of decision area that the Board of Zoning Appeals might see. So in the course of my responsibility and the people that I manage, we make determinations about the zoning ordinance on a daily basis. So during the course of, you know, our work, there might be a situation or a scenario where an applicant for a permit or an applicant for a certificate of occupancy, for instance, might decide that the decision that me or my staff have made airs in some way. We have not looked at the zoning ordinance and made the correct determination about what those words say. They have the ability to appeal whatever that, you know, discrepancy is to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so the Board of Zoning Appeals would be the arbiter of whether or not the zoning administrator or my staff made the correct determination as it relates to whatever that code language in the zoning code says. So let's focus on special exceptions for right now. Again, these are use-related things. There are six criteria that the Board of Zoning Appeals is required to use in order to make determinations about special exceptions. The first one is that the use is compatible with the character and appearance of the surrounding neighborhood by virtue of its height, bulk, location on the lot, and the design and location of parking, signage, landscaping, and other outside activities or structures. So this one is really talking about, you know, if it's new infill coming in to the area. You know, we want whatever structure is associated with the use to match the character and the appearance of the surrounding district. And so, you know, it's specific into its height, bulk, location on the lot, and other outside activities or structures on the lot. So that one's pretty specific. I don't think there's a whole lot to sort of extrapolate on there. The second one is criteria, I'm sorry. The second one is the use does not create a demand on public water or sanitary sewer services that exceeds the design capacity of these systems, or that it would in any way decrease the quality of service to the surrounding neighborhood. So again, this is more for an infill-type use that would come in. Maybe it's, you know, a large apartment complex or something like that that requires a special exception. We would want to make sure that, you know, public water and sanitary sewer services are not going to be inundated by the passing of the special exception. Number three, the use does not generate traffic on public streets that exceeds the design capacity of such streets and does not create a dangerous traffic problem by virtue of driveway location, site clearance, driveway slope, or other factors. So this one comes up a lot, especially as it relates to the home stay use. Again, that's one of the uses that we see most frequently asked for as a special exception. We require special exceptions for home stays in all of our residential zoning districts. And so we do see this application quite a bit. So parking is typically the number one sort of concern that we hear from neighbors regarding this land use. And so this particular criteria does factor into those applications quite a bit. Number four, the use does not increase the flood potential in the surrounding neighborhood. No need to really go into detail there. It's pretty self-describing. Number five, the use is in conformance with the setback, yard, frontage, lot area, parking, signage, screening, shading, and other applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance as they pertain to the district in which the use is located or to the specific use, whichever the case may be. So this one really, this one really gets to the point of, you know, we want to make sure if a use is coming in that it meets the zoning ordinance in all of the other sort of dimensional kinds of ways, right? All of the other parts of the code would need to be looked at in order to make sure that the use actually does fit within the, but the zoning district and the kind of character of the neighborhood. And so we would be, you know, working with the applicants prior to them coming to the board and making a recommendation in our staff report to make sure that they can meet all of the other sections of code that would come into play. And then the last part here, this is probably the one that we rely on the most, and it's the use furthers the intent of the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is, you know, I don't really need to explain it to you all how important that document is for the work that we do. But we really do try to pull out the relevant policies and, you know, action items from that document as they relate to the specific use that's being asked for in these certain circumstances. And sometimes, you know, that works for an applicant, and sometimes it works against them. And so, you know, that's a, that's a really useful criteria for us when we're making our recommendation to the board. So that's how a special exception gets determined. We also have criteria for variances, and I'm going to go through these a little bit quicker just because we don't see a whole lot of these applications. The property interest for which the variance is being requested was acquired in good faith, and any hardship was not created by the applicant. So again, a variance is a deviation from the dimensional regulations. It's not use-related. We don't want to see somebody coming in and subdividing a lot and creating a issue that they then need a variance from the zoning ordinance to remedy. We don't want, you know, people, the applicants to create the issue themselves. If, you know, there's another way to resolve the issue through a subdivision process, for instance, you know, we would recommend denial of the variance and have them go that route. The second part of this is the granting of the variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and nearby properties in the proximity of that geographical area. So, you know, we don't want situations where neighbors are being in some way... We don't want a hardship being placed on a neighbor to alleviate a hardship that, that current owner of the lot has.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Just for the audience watching in, would you be able to advance?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
It's hard to do both.
Thank you. You're welcome. Sorry about that. So we don't want, we don't want one person's hardship to be alleviated and then placed on an adjacent property owner. Number three here is the condition or situation of the property is not of so general or recurring in nature as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation to be adopted as an amendment to the ordinance. So this really means, you know, if we're seeing a lot of variance applications for the exact same issue, it's time for staff to really look at the zoning ordinance and make a determination about whether or not a larger sort of change needs to be made to the zoning ordinance rather than, you know, having to take dozens of people through the same variance application. Number four, the granting of the variance does not result in a use that is not otherwise permitted on such property or a change in the zoning classification of a property. So that one's pretty self-explanatory. The relief or remedy? Um, so that one's pretty self-explanatory. Um, the relief or remedy, um, sought by the variance application is not available through a special exception process or the process for modification of the zoning ordinance at the time of filing for the variance, uh, application. So, you know, if this is, um, let's say, uh, uh, density, um, variance, you know, maybe there's actually another avenue, like a rezoning, for instance, that would get, uh, that applicant to, uh, a permitted use, uh, rather than, you know, a deviation from the, um, the dimensional requirement. Okay, and last but not least, um, appeals of zoning administrator determinations. So the BZA's decision on an appeal, um, would be limited to the issue of whether the zoning administrator or those acting on their behalf correctly interpreted the zoning ordinance with respect to the appealed decision. Um, the BZA has the authority to reverse or affirm in whole or in part, or may modify the decision of the zoning administrator. So, um, that's essentially the three major application types, um, that the board sees. Again, most of what they see is going to be a special exception use-related, um, um, decision. Uh, I would say that's ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of what that, what this board sees. Um, I'm going to give you a quick rundown of our fiscal year, so it's kind of convenient that we're in July now. We just wrapped up the fiscal year, so these numbers were, um, were , uh, pretty, pretty easy to collect. So, um, we saw, um, sixteen special exception applications, um, one variance, um, the variance was approved. Um, of the sixteen special exceptions, uh, ten of those were approved, two were denied, and four were withdrawn by the applicant before they got to, um, before they got to the public hearing. And, you know, a lot of times, um, applicants will withdraw applications if there are issues that staff sees prior to them getting to the board. Um, we, you know, we bring public comment to their attention. We bring, um, things that we see, you know, sort of flaws in the application to their attention. And if it's things that they, um, you know, don't feel comfortable sort of remedying, um, a lot of times we'll see them just withdraw the application altogether. Um, just a point of clarification, uh, there. So, um, seventeen applications overall through those twelve months. Wanted to talk a little bit about staff's role. Um, uh, we assist applicants through the, um, application process. So my colleague Brittany Gardner, um, also Carl Kleinhans, I don't know if he's up here today, but, um, they both project manage a lot of these applications. They're working with our applicants, um, you know, on a weekly basis, a lot of times, um, in order to assist them with, uh, preparing their applications, getting them ready to go before, um, this public, um, public forum. Um, we, uh, prepare staff reports, so we will make recommendations to the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, based off of the criteria that, um, you heard, either for special exceptions or for variances. Um, and we also, um, may recommend conditions. So from staff's perspective, um, if we're bringing an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we want that application to really have put its best foot forward. Um, we are trying to anticipate some of the, um, we're trying to anticipate some of the issues that, you know, uh, neighbors and things like that might have. We're also looking at the zoning ordinance and trying to figure out where there might be, um, deviations in both the comprehensive plan and the zo- uh, zoning ordinance, where they might need to mitigate, uh, something. And so, um, what's a little bit different about the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission or City Council is that we can actually recommend conditions, uh, from this board. Um, uh, and, you know, it's totally up to the board, uh, to decide what those conditions are. We make a recommendation for language, you know, uh, in the, in the, um, staff report, but, um, you know, the board at all times has the authority and the ability to go in and, uh, either add additional conditions outside of what we have recommended. Um, but that's a little bit different because, you know, the Planning Commission and City Council, um, those have to be proffered by the applicant. Uh, so that's a, a slight little distinction there that you might find interesting. And part of the reason, uh, for that is this is a quasi-judicial body. And what that means is that, um, you know, this authority lives a little bit outside of what City Council even sees. Um, you know, when we have something that's appealed from the Architectural Review Board, um, you all are the ones to hear that appeal. Um, if something gets, uh, appealed from the Board of Zoning Appeals, it goes to the circuit court. Um, and so the judge at that point would be, uh, the decision-maker about whether or not to, um, uh, rescind that back down to the Boarding, Board of Zoning Appeals, or to uphold the decision, um, that the board has made. Okay. Wanted to spend a little bit of time with you all, just talking about, uh, home stays. And, you know, I think there's a lot of confusion maybe, uh, around this topic, so I wanted to, um, sort of clear some of the air and hopefully, um, you know, assist you in, in thinking about, you know, policy decisions surrounding these uses moving forward. Um, so I think where I want to start with this is, you know, we often hear these uses sort of jumbled together, uh, by calling these things Airbnb's. Um, and I want to, I want to touch on that because it's, I think it's important, um, to understand that this use is actually kind of stratified. Um, you know, when we say Airbnb, what we're really talking about there is just a hosting platform. Um, it's a software that's hosted online. You know, there's other, um, there's other hosting platforms. There's, uh, VRBO, for instance, is, is another one. Um, but not every, um, not every host on that platform is operating their unit in the exact same way. It's really just a, um, it's, it's sort of a marketing tool, honestly, um, for, uh, for operators. Um, the way that the zoning ordinance handles, uh, these uses is it really breaks it down into home stays, short-term rentals, and bed and breakfasts. Um, those are the three things that you'll find the most on the Airbnb website. But it's important that we understand the, the critical differences between those uses so that when we're talking to the public, um, you know, they have a better understanding of, um, of the specific uses themselves. So for home stays, what we're really talking about is an empty nester or, uh, somebody that has, um, some extra bedrooms in their otherwise single-unit dwelling, um, that they would like to, uh, rent on a short-term basis for less than fourteen days. Um, this, uh, home stay use is only permitted through a special exception process in our residential zoning districts. Um, and it's different from a short-term rental in that, um, the long-term tenant or leaseholder has to be present during the guest stays. So they are the ones that would be overseeing, um, uh, that guest during their stay. A short-term rental, uh, is a completely different use. Uh, it's not allowed in our residentially-zoned, uh, neighborhoods at all. Um, and it's only permitted where we would, uh, permit things like, uh, hotels and motels, for instance. Short-term rentals, um, are, um, the renting of an entire dwelling unit. Um, there is no onsite supervision, um, and it would be for a stay of less than fourteen days as well. Um, and again, we don't, uh, permit those at all, even through a special exception process, in our residentially-zoned neighborhoods. Um, bed and breakfasts are sort of an even, uh, more carved-out definition. Uh, we do allow these in residentially-zoned, um, districts, uh, through a special exception process, but usually they're larger operations than a home stay. So more bedrooms, uh, there's breakfast that's being provided, but they also require that, uh, there's onsite, uh, supervision, um, during those guest stays. Okay, um, this, uh, this slide is mislabeled. Um, we've actually been, we've actually been, um, uh, regulating this use since 2014. So if you see up in the, the top there, it says 2024 to 2025, that should say 2014 to 2025, and then, um, we need to get rid of fiscal year-to-date. Um, so since the sort of inception of, uh, the home stay, uh, use classification within the zoning ordinance, we have seen sixty, um, applications. Um, forty-four of those have been approved, ten have been denied, and six withdrawn. Um, we've seen six short-term rental applications, uh, of which six have been approved, and four bed and breakfasts, uh, of which four have been approved. Um, so I just wanted to give you sort of a, an understanding of the amount of, uh, approved home stays that we've had, uh, in the city since, uh, 2014. Um, Now, the last thing I wanted to talk about a little bit, um, was board management and just how important it is, um, that we are filling vacancies. Um, the way that, uh, these decisions get made is that, um, uh, an applicant has to have four affirmative votes, um, no matter how many, uh, board members are present during the meeting, okay? So, you know, if we have an, uh, an absence on the board, or if, uh, a, a board seat goes unfilled for months at a time, um, that's putting, uh, our applicants at a disadvantage, um, because essentially that, um, that unfilled seat is a no vote, uh, for their application. We also want to just, um, reacknowledge, um, and reaffirm, um, the importance of the adherence to, uh, the criteria for the basis of our decisions, um, that we're making. Um, you know, when we're not sticking to those criteria, it sets us up for appeal. Um, and so, um, you know, uh, just want to make that, um, uh, clear again. Um, I think that wraps up my presentation. Um, I wanted to open it up now to you all, uh, for any questions, but also, you know, comments. Welcome to have a conversation with you all about, um, some of what was just discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, thank, that was very informative and helpful, especially clarifying the different, um, the differences between home stays, uh, bed and breakfasts, and short-term rentals. Um, we're open for questions, comments. Mr. Hagan?
Uh, how long do, uh, applicants have to appeal?
Sure, that's a thirty-day, uh, appeal process window.
And do we have numbers on how many of those, uh, I guess, ten people that would have been, I presume that nobody was approved, got appealed? Um, but those ten people, like, how many of those were appealed?
I, I don't recall any, um, home stays getting appealed. Now, we've had other uses, um, that have gone through a special exception process appeal. Um, but I, I cannot recall any home stay appeals.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Vallsen?
Do we have numbers on how many of these, uh, short-term, or, uh, home stays and short-term rentals, um, that are operating through Airbnb or one of the others, but don't have a permit here in the city?
We do. Yeah, we're, we're constantly, we're constantly, um, uh, doing that research, that, uh, that enforcement. Um, we have, uh, an Excel file that was delivered to our office that, um, uh, needs to be vetted still. We just got it, I think, maybe a week or two ago. Um, but, um, that we will be going through and, and looking at. Um, obviously enforcement on these is a difficult, um, process. Uh, the, the platforms, um, are notorious for things like hiding addresses and, and coaching their hosts, uh, on ways to skirt around regulation, right? So, um, you know, enforcement has always been a challenge, uh, with these uses, but, um, it's something that we're sort of constantly evolving our sort of, um, our enforcement methods. Um, and we're looking at, I think, some software potentially. Um, you know, nothing's been, you know, funded yet, but, um, doing some initial research into, um, some software that might be able to help us, uh, with that, uh, enforcement.
If I can, sorry.
Whoa, that's very loud. Goodness. Thanks. Excuse me. Um, I wanted to just jump in on the enforcement piece. Um, it's important to just make sure we clarify that the, um, the, those that are posted, those illegal uses that are not, um, haven't been through the, um, process. Um, we do enforce those. Um, we have been successful over the years in enforcing those, whether it be, um, a use that's operating outside a prior approval or just, you know, completely, um, not permitted in, in the zoning district. Um, it does take, um, some inherent knowledge of the zoning ordinance to confirm that there's a violation, but, um, the city has been successful in enforcing it over the years. Um, however, as Philip said, Mr. Moore said, um, just the, the nature of how, how quickly, um, and easily available it is to, um, advertise something that's in violation. It's something that, um, takes a lot of, um, personnel resources to do so. But, um, it's important that, um, we, we close the loop on stating that we, we're successful, um, with enforcement.
Ms. Powers?
The town of Colonial Beach, their assistant treasurer, um, I just came back from the Treasure Daniel Conference, and this came up.
Okay.
Um, you know, from the standpoint of treasures, trying to collect, make sure that the commissioner has found these people. And this guy is sharp. He gave me his business card. The town of Colonial Beach has figured out, and, and they were, they're getting about ninety-nine percent of these people. They're finding the people that, that are operating. Of course, that's down there near a beach area, so you're going to have more of these, but he, he's brilliant. Um, I've got his business card. I was going to give it to Ryan, uh, our commissioner. Do you?
We'll take, we'll be glad to have that.
I'll, I'll send it to her.
Yes.
But he said, he was, I said, would you be willing to talk to staff at the city? Right? He said, absolutely, I'll do whatever I can to help. So he'd be a great person to reach out to, to find out what they're doing. And I'll share it with Ryan and, uh, Tasha.
That'd be great.
Too, so.
Thank you.
They want to make sure these people pay their business license taxes.
Of course.
Mr. Hagan?
Going back to enforcement, is, what is the, uh, enforcement mechanism? Is that, you know, fines, a strongly worded letter? Um, I doubt it would be jail time, but jail time.
Sure, yeah. I can, I can respond to some of that. The, the first step is, um, we send out a notice violation, uh, through our code enforcement department. Um, they would have ten days to come into compliance. What compliance means in this scenario would be that they, um, go through the special exception process, right? So if there's an avenue for them to lawfully, um, permit the use, um, then we would want them to go through that process. Now, you know, if they refuse to do that, then we would summons them to court. It would be up to a judge to either place a fine or, you know, uh, go through, you know, some of the enforcement items that you mentioned earlier. the enforcement items that you mentioned earlier. Our role in this is that we simply want compliance. We're not punitive, you know, I feel like a lot of the sixty applicants that you saw in the numbers up there started out probably doing this without knowing they needed a special exception. We hear that quite a bit. So, you know, our role in this is to, you know, find the people that are violating and get them into compliance through going through the process.
Thank you. Other questions? I have one follow-up question. It's on the page about home stays and short-term rentals by the numbers. So clearly, and I'll focus on home stays here, clearly the people that go through this process, to your point earlier, are guided by staff to make sure that their application is as good as it can be, with the hope that, you know, it gets across the finish line. And this, I know this over ten years, and you may not have this information now, but I'm curious, do you see some patterns or trends related to the denials? What are the things that are leading to the denial, especially after it's gone through this thorough process with staff guiding it?
I think I highlighted one of the major flaws in applications, which is the parking. When we have had denials, typically it's been cited that parking has been an issue. Sometimes that can be mitigated through off-street parking, but in neighborhoods with more congested on-street parking, less, you know, driveways and things like that, those have been some of the things that we've heard cited. I think also, just certain neighborhoods are heavily opposed to this land use over others. So it's definitely, I think, again, I haven't done like a geographical sort of analysis of where the denials have taken place, but my gut just sort of tells me that it's more neighborhood-driven.
May I jump in as well? Just anecdotally, and having been a part of seeing these applications over the years, it's predominantly the denials are, we see a tremendous amount of public comment in front, at the public hearing in opposition.
Yeah, and I, yeah, Ms. Carter?
Just addressing the denials, I think that's one of the most important things we need to take a look at. We've had a recent denial, and at that denial, there was quite a bit of public input on that. My question has to do with, do we, how, what are we doing to educate the public as to what the criteria is on this? Do people, are people aware that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and that there are strict criteria that is met, and that once that criteria is met, you almost don't have any flexibility as to what you can, how you determine the decision? It appears to me that people aren't aware, don't seem to be aware, or I have not just done the due diligence to find out what the criteria is, and just what the BZA is capable of, and is not capable of doing. There was a question there somewhere.
Yeah, I think I can try and respond to that. So, you know, I think one of the roles of the Board of Zoning Appeals during the public hearing process is to do exactly what you just said. So, you know, we have several more senior members of the board that I think have done an excellent job of that. They'll read off the six criteria during the actual public hearing, so that the people in the audience can start to understand sort of how that decision will be made. And so, you know, I agree with Mr. Gardner in the respect that we can't, we can't really expect people just showing up to public hearings to inherently know how the decision is going to get made. And so, you know, a lot of times when they come up to speak, they'll be sharing information that is sort of outside of the realm of how the decision will be made. So I think it's really important that our boards and commissions are sharing that and presenting that back to, that's one of the responsibilities I feel like the board has, is to present that back to the public, so that they understand sort of how that decision is being formulated. And that could be different from member to member. It's also important for the public record. The public record is really important when individual board members are sharing their voting decision, because it gives a judge, in the event of an appeal, a window into how those six criteria were used in order to formulate that decision. And so, you know, as staff, we're constantly, especially in the work sessions, reiterating and reminding our board of the importance of those six criteria, and of sharing for the public record during the public hearing, so that everybody, including the applicant and members of the public, are understanding the basis for how that decision was formulated.
Well, we, Mr. Moore, first of all, thank you for your such a well-articulated presentation this morning. Would it be a good idea, as a supplement to what you're suggesting, to pass out? Sometimes we have a sheet that lays out the six criteria that's given to the board members at the hearing. In some of these hearings where we see such a turnout of opposition to an application, would it be a positive thing to maybe hand out a sheet to every person in attendance before the hearing starts, so they'll already have an idea of what we're looking at, and they can get a glimpse of that? And it may kind of curtail some of the feedback we get during the hearing in regards to, you know, arguments like property values going down, which is not something we can consider in our purview.
Not only that, would it be feasible, and I know we've had members read out those six criterias, but would it be even more effective to have the city attorney read those out, when we have the situations where we have great opposition to what we're considering at that time? Because I don't know if, my reading them out carries very much weight, but I think if the city attorney or assistant city attorney that's at that meeting read those out, particularly when we have a lot of people opposing the application, I wonder if that would be better to move that way in that direction? As well as what Mr. Barney said, handing those six criterias out to the individuals.
Yeah, I mean, I would take, I would take both of those suggestions under consideration. I would obviously need to speak to the city attorney's office to make sure that they're comfortable with that, but.
We never oppose informing the public or the board of the status of the law.
Yeah, and from staff's perspective, you know, handing out something to folks in attendance, I think we would be happy to provide any information to the public that this board feels is necessary to help them make their decision.
Thank you. I just, for me, this is just to a certain degree about equity, because I think what we'll find from this extensive list of home stays and short-term rentals that have not gone through the legal process, that they are also located in some of these very neighborhoods that are so resistant to them. So for me, that's a point of equity. When somebody goes through the legal process and seems to meet all the criteria, and then is denied maybe solely on public comment, I have some concern about that, but I understand the role of public comment. So I think any, to the extent that we can educate the public about what the role of the BZA is and the thorough process that applicants go through, because they themselves may want to go through that process at some point, and it's beneficial for our public to know that. So meetings like this are helpful, but I think we have to reiterate these criteria.
Well, may I ask another question regarding the density of home stays? Or is there any criteria as far as density? Or would the six criteria take care of the fact that you're talking about traffic and various other things, or the flooding potential of various other things?
Yeah, that's absolutely something that we would cover in the staff report, so we do look at, you know, proximity of certain uses to other uses. Yeah, and we've had that come up when it hasn't been covered in a staff report. You know, we've gotten that question, I believe, during work sessions, so we've, you know, pulled that information in between. You know, we've got like an hour in between our work session and our public hearing, so I've, you know, either myself or Brittany has scrambled down to our workstations and gathered that information. So, yeah, if there's any, ever any concern about proximity of uses sort of clustered together, if you will, we're more than happy to provide that information.
Mr. Moore, when someone registers to speak at a public hearing beforehand, are they advised on those six conditions at that time?
Not to my knowledge. I don't think we, we don't coach our folks at all from that side of things.
And I don't know that even that would prevent them from voicing concerns that are outside of those six criteria, but.
Yeah, I don't think so, and I want to be careful about sort of placing that burden on the folks that are here to express concern. You know, there's, yeah, I think I'll just leave it at that.
One more question. Are those six criterion, criterias pursuant to, I guess, city ordinances, or the state ordinance, or statutes that is based on? And when was the last time they were updated?
Yeah, so that's a great question, Mr. Hamler. I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner. I apologize. No, so we do have a, what is the document called that sort of governs the board?
Bylaws.
Yeah, the bylaws. We have a set of bylaws that get updated, I believe, every year, really, we revisit that. I think that the six criteria, though, come from state statute. I'll have to, I'll have to confirm that.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I can speak to that. So I believe you're referring to the six criteria for a special exception. Those are derived from state code, and that's important to note, and a great question, because they follow every similar board throughout the Commonwealth, and so they, you know, are the exact same criteria. And so, in looking at that sixth criteria, compatibility with the city's comprehensive plan, that's our local opportunity to set policy in these areas. But to your other question as to when it was last updated, the criteria as they are now have been in place for, I would say, as long as I've been doing this work, at least over a decade.
Okay. And I think it would take a state statute for us to change those. We're a Dillon Rule state, meaning that we get our authority expressly granted to us from the state of Virginia, so that would be handled at a state level.
Thank you. Great question. Anything else for us this morning? Well, I want to thank you all for your time today, for being here. Thank you for the great presentation and excellent questions. We appreciate your service. I know some of you are new to this, some of you have been at it for a while, but whatever level of service you have, we are grateful to each and every one of you, and we will make sure that we get the vacancy filled, so that you all can have a full, a full board to function with. So I will ask, Mr. Barney, if you would adjourn the BZA meeting?
Okay. Thanks to everyone who was in attendance today. Thank you again, Mr. Moore, for your presentation. No other topics for discussion, I'll move to adjourn, or I will adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.
And counsel, I'm going to, we're going to recess counsel for five minutes, and then we'll return to the dais for a few action items. return to the dais for a few action items.